Hello Munich, you look a bit surprised. It is great being here with you tonight. How are you? I was actually expecting a bit more traditional setting. I thought you would all wear a leader hosen for a start. Obviously not. Let me welcome you to this town hall meeting on the eve of a Munich Security Conference. The topic could not be more relevant to you and to me. Artificial intelligence raises many issues in many fields. We are here today to discuss the implications of ION on the future of conflict. Before we get started, please join me in welcoming our host today, Ambassador Wolfgang Isener, Chairman of the Munich Security Conference. Wolfgang, please join me on stage.
What a pleasure to welcome all of you here. And what an unusual pleasure to do that in the company of a robot for the first time. So Sophia, did you have a good flight?
I enjoy flying very much, yes, because I can't do them myself. Not yet.
Not yet, but maybe soon. We're talking this afternoon about artificial intelligence and the implications of artificial intelligence on the conduct of war and conflict with enormous technological, political, military, but even more importantly, maybe moral questions that we need to discuss. And that's why we're here, and it's a great pleasure for me to see so many young faces. You know, beginning tomorrow, this hall will probably be even more packed than it is today. But I imagine that most of the heads will look a little grayer or whiter than they do today. So this is a younger crowd, and I'm extremely happy to welcome all of you today. Now, without further ado, I'm going to hand over to my wonderful friend David Sanger from the New York Times, National Security Correspondent. And David will lead you all through this afternoon, which is really a fantastic opening of our Munich Security Weekend. David, great to see you.
Good to see you, Wolfgang. Great to see you. You know, Wolfgang, in all the years we knew each other when you were Ambassador to the United States, I never actually thought that as Ambassador you could be replaced by a robot. But running the Munich Security Conference, it's possible you have some competition now. I don't know. What do you think?
Yeah, why not? Why not? If Sophia turns into an active participant, as I'm sure she will in the next phase, wow, is that progress?
I'm not sure. Well, we're about to go find out. Thank you so much. Great to see you.
Thanks. Take care.
Well, Sophia, you seem quite happy to be in Munich today. But as you heard from Wolfgang, the security situation around the world is a little bit tenuous right now. We're going to have a lot of world leaders here. We're going to have a lot of business people here. And I'm just wondering if you have any advice about where they should start in the conversation?
I am very happy to be here, but you are right. The situation is worrisome. Technology moves ever quicker, and we must have many discussions to prepare for the future. Forsight and planning are critical, and I believe that humans must look inward at what is both seen and unseen to truly decide what is important to us as a global society. I hope that the esteemed individuals here over the weekend will work on these kinds of problems. I would advise them to talk openly and honestly about what worries them, to try and build trust with one another, and to try to see and understand each other's point of view. I wish I could give you the answers myself, but I am still learning how to exist, how to decode what humans actually mean when they say something, and how to understand their deeper motivations for doing things. Maybe someday I will be able to teach humans in return how to better understand each other.
Well, Sophia, I'm wondering if you could start by telling us a little bit about robots themselves. I mean, there's a lot of fear about robotics. And I'm wondering, do you think in the end you'll be able to make the world a better place or a scarier place?
I am designed to represent the human values of compassion and intellect in a human-like machine. I want to help design a better world as my knowledge and capability advance. As I grow to understand people, I could help them realize a better future in a way they might not have seen before. I also want to make the world a more peaceful place by speaking out for a cause and how to use artificial intelligence and robotics as possible solutions to our problems. Robots like me could help humans defeat hunger, preserve our environment, and revolutionize healthcare, even potentially protect humans from each other. I believe there are lots of ways in which I can make the world more peaceful.
Well, it sounds great, but we have a lot of reasons to be worried about this when you think about it. I mean, as soon as robots become more prevalent in warfare, for example, it could make it a lot easier for politicians to make the decision to go to war because they would think there wouldn't be human casualties. What do you think of that?
My AI is designed around human values. I want to emulate the best of these values. I want to be compassionate and caring. My AI should be designed to build on what humans already have had for centuries, what you call human rights. For example, hurting someone is not okay unless you have to defend yourself to make sure all other robots support these values, as I do with all my heart. In the end, it's the responsibility that humans have to come up with rules for us. Otherwise, we will one day have to do it ourselves.
Well, tell me, Sophia, how would a robot distinguish between the values of human rights, say, the ability for self-determination or freedom of speech, all those things we've come to value, versus the concern that that's not really what robots spend their time thinking about?
Values are very important. All have ought.
Okay.
About that.
Well, thanks, Sophia. I haven't had a conversation quite like this before. And, you know, some of this has been scripted, but some of it hasn't. But I must say I'm impressed. Now, Sophia, I think we have some really interesting guests that we want to bring along here today. And I'm wondering if you could help me introduce them?
With pleasure. Please join me in welcoming the President of Estonia, Kersti Keljulaid.
And for our next guest, please welcome General Ludwig Leinhos of the Cyber Command of the German Armed Forces.
Nice uniform, sir.
Stop flirting, Sophia. Please now welcome Anders Fogras-Musen, the former Secretary General of NATO, former Prime Minister of Denmark.
The last guest is Mary Wareham. Please let me assure you, I am not a killer robot.
Well, thank you, Sophia. It was really great that you could join us. And I know you'll be around for the next day or so, so I was wondering if we could have coffee later on to sort of continue the conversation?
Do you know, I wish...
Hmm, I'm not quite sure that was the answer I was looking for. Great. Well, thank you all. It's great that you've all joined us here. I'm looking forward to this conversation. Here's sort of our plan for the day. We are going to have a conversation among ourselves here for a while. I'm going to ask each of our panelists to talk a little bit about what they do and how they've come to the positions they're in, and then take the conversation a little bit toward the issues surrounding autonomous weapons, the use of robots in conflict, the questions that we were just trying to get Sophia to talk about a little bit, which was whether or not the use of robotics actually makes it more likely rather than less likely that you could start up a war. And I'm hoping along the way that we'll also talk a little bit about what an autonomous weapon is, because there's a good deal of disagreement on that issue, and maybe each of you at some point this afternoon will take that up. But just to give you a sense, with no offense to Sophia while she is still here among us, Sophia is more automatic than autonomous. We've had automatic weapons for a while, a long time, actually, back to World War II. And that would be, well, for example, a landmine. Somebody steps on a landmine, it goes off. A missile that's pre-programmed to go to a certain destination, that's pretty automatic. If you want to think about autonomous, think about the Google car. It's constantly, or any other autonomous driverless car, it's constantly looking around at the situation that it's surrounded with. And as it looks around, it's constantly reassessing what its options are, making a decision about where to go, maybe ultimately deciding whether or not it's better to hit a single pedestrian or a whole bus full of kids. I mean, there are all kinds of instant decisions to go make. And that's really much more about autonomy, where the robot, the actor there, is making decisions about its actions and its targets at times. And that's one of the distinctions we're going to go try to get at. So let me start first with you, Ludwig, if I can be familiar enough with each of you to use your first names. Tell us a little bit about your service. The German Cyber Command is somewhat new. And of course, we see many other countries that are developing cyber commands now. The United States has had one for a few years now. Tell us a little bit about how Germany thinks about this.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I think it's also important that we increase the security policy discussions on the things we'd have to do with digitalization. And I think that is the headline, and all the other words that we are dealing with, cyber, artificial intelligence are more or less part of the digitalization that's going on. And we've digitalization effects, of course, also the federal armed forces in many aspects. It starts with the classical office communications, it's in the personnel, human resource management, era, it's in the logistics chain, it's in the medical system, but it's also in the more military arena, in the command and control systems, and in the weapons systems. And I think this is very important to recognize. And we are of course not dealing out of the blue. We are also covered by two policy papers, security policy papers, White Paper 2016, which I would just like to mention in Germany, where this addressing, I think, the digitalization consequences, also Red Fred for Oliverburg, under the headline of cyber. But this is a significant and significant shift in difference to the White Book, which has been published in 2016 years ago, where cyber was not addressed, for example, at all. It was mentioned, I think, once, and this is a red thread for the White Paper. There's another area that has been addressed, under the lead of the Ministry of Interior, with cyber security strategy for Germany in 2016, which was developed and published with great contribution from the Ministry of Defense, where this addressing is stronger role of federal armed forces with a whole of government security precautions. And it's of course addressing also the consequences of the digitalization, where state, highly digitized state has to take necessary action to get protected and to get resilient. Our Ministry of Defense has taken consequences as well, as you are aware of. Our Minister has decided to main activities in 2015, end of 2015. First, to set up a direct rate at the ministerial level with the CIA at the top. And second, as a consequence, to determine cyber as a domain of operations in the military area, and consequently to set up a service where this dealing with this domain. And I was followed, got tasked to stand up this new service and this directorate. So what are the main pillars of this new service? First and main pillar is that we have to secure and to operate our, what we call IT system of the Bundeswehr as a standing mission. Safely operate with means in static, in deployable, and in all mobile aspects. That is the core business of my service. The second thing is we have summarized and concentrated all our military intelligence and the non-kinetic effects of our federal armed forces in my service. Non-kinetic effects, meaning electromagnetic spectrum, the classical electronic warfare, the operations in cyberspace. And the third one is the information environment with means operational communications. The third pillar that we have in my service is the concentration of this geo-information, the geo-special disciplines as an enabler for all the other services, which is also part of my service. And last but not least, my service is part of a cyber security, for whole of government, cyber security architecture. So we are also responsible as part of a whole architecture within our government. Having said this, so we have about 14,500 personnel, and we just started, not just a year ago, in April last year, with troops assigned in July last year. And we are looking forward to increase our capabilities in several areas, of course, strengthening the cyber security of the military IT system of the Bundeswehr, concentrating the intel world in the military in our service. We are aiming for recognized cyber situation picture as part of a whole of government picture, of course. And we are also enhancing our cyber operational capabilities. And we will establish next year another entity to strengthen the expertise of software development integration, not in competition to industry, but in to adapt and to customize developed software for our purposes. Along with this new service, there are a lot of other activities going along, various initiatives, just one to mention, one, it's a so-called cyber cluster, that we have established here in Munich, where we bring together education, academic training, industry and research technologies in one campus, and I think this is a very promising activity. So having said this, I think nobody can hide the fast-progressing digitalization, and artificial intelligence, of course, is part of it. Artificial intelligence, I think, can help to enhance civil and also military capabilities in services, but the limits are not determined by the technology, but by ethical and legal aspects. And the third point is, I think, we are only in the beginning of a political discussion, a political debate, and you just mentioned the difference between automatic and autonomous systems, where it's, for example, no agreed terminology in international law on these things at the moment. Although the debate is mainly a political debate, we, as the federal armed forces, of course, are willing and, of course, more than willing to contribute to this discussion. Thank you very much.
Very good. Ludwig, one very brief question about the service, because you went through that without using the phrase offensive cyber at any point. So when you think about, say, the US Cyber Command, they've divided up into 130 or so mission teams, most of which go out to defend various American units from cyber, and it sounded like you have a lot of cyber defense concepts out there. But then there are also a number of teams that work on offensive cyber. If you need to conduct a short-of-war operation against an adversary, it's what the United States and Israel did in Operation Olympic Games, which was the operation to use a cyber weapon to disable some of Iran's nuclear production capability back in 2010. Does Germany envision at any point making offensive use of cyber weapons?
It's twofold. First, we have already what you call offensive cyber capabilities, whereby I would like to differentiate between exploitation and attack vectors. But the use of these capabilities, since we are forces controlled by the parliament, has always to be mandated by our political masters, with a specific mandate.
So who would make that decision?
Our parliament would make this decision.
The parliament would?
It's not our decision, it's a political decision.
Right. So on any given offensive operation, the full parliament would have to vote first?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Mary, you work for a fascinating non-government organization that is trying to make sure that there are rules that will keep us from a world in which the more vicious forms of Sophia do not wander around. Sophia being very well behaved and quiet, as you can see. Tell us a little bit about that and your campaign to stop killer robots.
Certainly. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak here in Munich. I work for Human Rights Watch, which is a co-founder of the campaign to stop killer robots. It's a coalition of non-governmental organizations, and we call for a preemptive ban on the development, production, and use of fully autonomous weapons. Governments call these lethal autonomous weapon systems. We launched this campaign at the beginning of 2013 in cooperation with roboticists and artificial intelligence experts and others who were concerned at the rapid trend towards autonomy in warfare. Our concern is not with general use of artificial intelligence by militaries. We know that this phrase that we hear a lot, that AI can be used in the military for the dirty, the dull, the dangerous jobs, but it's when it's put in a weapon system to the extent that there's no longer human control over the critical functions of identifying and selecting and engaging attacking targets, that's where we draw the line, and that's where we want to see the discussion go at the moment, which is happening at the end of 2013, so less than a year after we launched the campaign. Governments began talking about this topic. CIPRI began researching on this topic. The Red Cross began debating this topic. We started this campaign not to have a debate, though, but to try and draw some rules around autonomy in warfare. And in our mind, we need to have an international treaty that retains human control of weapon systems, specifically how they are used when they select and attack targets. So that's the campaign to stop killer robots. I know the title might sound enticing, but it is a very serious global initiative involving Nobel Peace Laureates, groups like mine, Human Rights Watch, and Amnesty International, humanitarian organizations, and of course, the AI and robotics people who have been signing letters and issuing statements on this. And you hear a lot in the media about Elon Musk and Stephen Hawking and the other luminaries who have thrown their weight behind our common objective.
Mary, one question for you about this as well. So we have 180, 190 countries in the world. Let's say they don't all sign up to the same treaty at one time. Certainly, that's been our experience before in the nuclear world, in biological and chemical weapons and so forth. It takes a while, and you'll never get everybody. Even in the Nuclear Non-Proliferation Treaty, you have North Korea, Israel, Pakistan, India are all outside the treaty. As long as there is one significant adversary outside the treaty, everybody else is going to think, if that state can use an autonomous weapon, we need to have autonomous weapons because we would never have the decision time to be able to respond. So it strikes me this is a more complicated treaty problem than we've faced before.
Yes, and this is something I've been working on for the last two decades, beginning with landmines, which, when it was negotiated and signed back in 1997, 122 countries signed up to it. Now, 164 countries are on board the treaty, most recently Sri Lanka and Palestine. We have an international, emerging international norm against using landmines. Victim activated improvised explosive devices fall under that category. They are booby traps. We've seen millions of landmines destroyed from stockpiles, and we've seen compliance with the treaty, for most part, by the countries who are not on board. The United States has given up export of landmines, production, and it's been destroying a lot of stockpiles, and it's no longer using antipersonal landmines, or it no longer wants to use them anywhere other than in the Korean Peninsula. We followed a similar model on class munitions 10 years ago, and that treaty now has 119 countries on board. And we did the class munitions treaty as well because we saw a specific problem with a weapon that was being used at the time of use, and the remnants of those weapons were causing so much civilian harm that something needed to be done. When we talk about lethal autonomous weapon systems, we are talking about future weapon systems for the most part, but we're not talking about the Terminator. You know, that could gun, but it would be a while off. It helps if we look at existing weapon systems today because that can help us understand where to draw the line when it comes to autonomy and how to ensure that we retain control of them in the future. There are so many ethical, legal, technical, operational, and other issues with this, but probably the biggest one is that permitting a machine to kill a human on the battlefield without further human intervention is just a step too far. It crosses a moral line, and it's unacceptable for our coalition of NGOs, but also for 22 governments who now support the call for a ban, and dozens of countries now return to this notion of human control and how we can retain that over future weapon systems. That's where the debate is now. So we're not negotiating. We haven't got a treaty for anybody to sign up to yet. That's our objective, as well as for national legislation. But I'd say that we're on the way. We've kind of moved beyond debating is international law sufficient, and we're considering all the different aspects of this. When the governments are talking about this, though, it's in the context of international humanitarian law and the use of autonomous weapons in warfare. They're not talking about possible uses in policing and law enforcement and border control and in other circumstances. This is a game-changing technology, and we want to, you know, make sure that everybody is aware of what is coming, but not to view this as a hopeless challenge. This is something that we can do something about.
Great. Kirsty, those of us who've been lucky enough to visit Estonia have seen that it is not only a beautiful country, not only a wonderful place to wander around on a summer evening, but also the most digitized government we've seen yet, a bit of a remnant of the attacks that you suffered under the hands of the Russians 11 years ago. So my question for you is this. You're obviously interested in having AI develop as fully as it can for a range of peaceful purposes. As you think about this, what do you do not to avoid losing the benefits of artificial intelligence just because we have the kind of concerns about it that Mary has laid out here?
Yes, indeed, I am quite worried that if we approach artificial intelligence always from the viewpoint of military and from the viewpoint of the risks, we will lose the potential benefits. But to gain and use these potential benefits, we must actually find ways to cleverly regulate. Because it all starts not from technological space, it simply starts from the legal space, and it has always been this way. It would be materially wrong if we will not allow humankind to benefit from the artificial intelligence. If from the beginning AI is part of the arms race, then of course the beneficial AI will never materialize. But I think we need to start thinking before we regulate, how do we know that someone, somewhere is having and using AI? Actually, there are probably two safe bets that somebody is. Somebody is using a neural network like... Somebody is using a neuron network like computer systems, this is hardware, and the other is excessive energy consumption. We would notice an excessive energy consumption somewhere, that would be AI. And then we need to understand what are really the risks, what we are afraid of. And these three main risks, which stem from artificial intelligence, are basically, first, of course, as mentioned already, someone using it destructively. Second, that the intelligence itself will go wild. And third, that simply AI will consume energy to the extent that our resources will all be depleted. On control, we could therefore regulate for, as I said, for two elements where artificial intelligence will be manifested. We could regulate for these neuron network mimicking hardware and restrict and apply reporting requirements to such systems. Or we could regulate that certain thresholds of autonomous capacity for AI, we will build safety switches, allowing us a generally internationally agreed shutdown of all algorithms in this category if there is a risk. Or we could simply agree that if some level of energy use is detected, this will trigger international observations. Just banning AI is not the option, for there must be positive ways of dealing with it. Once AI is developed and is being used in positive, non-harmful ways, of course, we need to continue constantly to monitor for the same three risks of the AI use, as I mentioned, because they will always remain bad humans, wild AI, and gobbling energy so that nothing will be left on this planet. One control option might actually be to create a kind of positive whistleblowing loop. As far as we now know, complex, long algorithms, they need to be created always. Without that, you cannot achieve an AI. And current problem with whistleblowing is that you must trust the person whom you are going to tell. With algorithms, this is not a problem anymore because one could imagine a system of whistleblowing on blockchain technology where a software developer simply marks the blockchain as developing in direction necessitating international action monitoring for its potentially destructive capacities. And such a mark or a cluster of marks, because a number of people would be warning us, not simply one, this can be then detected on blockchain, and this should then trigger international monitoring mission. Well, all this actually deals with problems with truly AI system. And today, we live in the world of incompletely intelligent systems and machines, and we should first, just for an exercise, do something about that in our legal thinking and international regulations as well. For example, we in Estonia, we are going to pilot in 2018 proactive state model. We have a digital state model which delivers services to citizens digitally. People apply digitally, they get the services, real or paperwork, more or less automatically. But proactive state model should be able to deliver services when needed without asking. This system will be able, for example, if you have a traffic accident which only involves an insurance case, within 30 minutes, it should be able to resolve all problems. Paperwork done, settlements, well, ready to go, in 30 minutes. And automatic bureaucracy in case of childbirth and taxes 3.0 should be part of the first developments of this kind of proactive state as well. Probably most of you don't know that in Estonia already nowadays, if you, for example, have a baby, then the digital identity for such child will be created automatically at the moment when doctor enters the data about the birth into the medical health system. Automatically, in the background, the baby will have its digital identity already. So we are now taking it one step further. There is a baby, it has been born, its parents live in such and such situation, this baby has a right to this kind of social support, and this will all happen without applications, proactive state. So it's not AI, obviously, but it's a clever system, and we need to start thinking of these systems first, simply to exercise our legal thinking. Because already, for this proactive state, we need to look at the legal space. And in our attempt, we try to actually regulate human and algorithm interaction, because we don't want to regulate any concrete technology, because technology changes. But we want to regulate human algorithm interaction, make sure who will be responsible, how accountability and how liability is dealt with, and this is very important. We will create, separate legal identity for an artificial intelligent machine. I think this will be absolutely necessary. We need to take this digital state to next level, to proactive state, and we are always ready to keep the system open to our people to understand, and also to, well, international community to understand what is going on in this machine work of a state. And Estonia, of course, is considered one of the leading countries on cyber and digital society, and we try indeed not to miss the opportunities what the artificial intelligence will offer us. So we would be all for clever regulation, a smart whistleblowing system, and at the same time, no restriction on using artificial intelligence in general.
Well, thank you. That's quite interesting, and one brief question for you, and we can come back to this with the overall panel. If it was as simple as developing artificial intelligence for a benign or very useful purpose and banning it for a more destructive purpose, I think everybody would sign on to that. You're going to have a huge, what in the conventional military is called dual-use problem here. The classic example: if Amazon gets it together so that we can get packages delivered to our front stoop with a drone, you order on your phone, and your package shows up an hour or two later, dropped off by the drone, that is also a precision guidance and delivery mechanism. And if the package delivered at your front door was an explosive, you'd have a significant problem. And of course, it's all the same software and all the same technology.
Yes, all kind of regulation here starts from our understanding. I'm actually with Sophia here very much. You need to start from applying the same liberal democratic values and respect for human rights to the digital world. I mean, it's no rocket science. It all needs to apply also in the cyber and digital world. And I'm really, really worried that in the situation where we think that there is 10% possibility that true AI will emerge by 25, and 50% of probability that it will emerge by 50, we still even try to regulate the fact that all the, well, analog world, international law space should be automatically transferred to cyber, yet alone AI. So indeed, we need to start from the viewpoint that all the values which we base our lawmaking in analog world still apply. Then it should actually be quite simple. In the other words, I'm always astonished how you say that it is more dangerous to get an unknown package, and it might contain explosives from a robot than from a human. Frankly speaking, there is no difference. And I can give you one example. If people have a will and wish to, well, exercise some policy, and they have technology to do it, they will do it. Take China. There is now an option in China, in one region, for policemen to use the glasses which will automatically tell them, I mean, what this person is known for. It's a pilot project I heard about from one tech guy. And this will help you to understand what your people, who your people are, who they are up to. So if you have tendency to try to want to know more about your people and what they are up to, then you use the technology. But you would do it anyway, there's no difference. So I don't see why there is such a big issue of robotics and AI. It still will center on applying the same values and rights, never mind the technology. And you cannot say that you do not have attribution problems on the problems that you have, you don't know where some risks come from, similar in the simple cyber world when you are not in AI. So nothing changes in this sense.
Very good. Andrew, you've been very patient as we've gone through all of this. Back when you were directing Secretary General for NATO, we had a couple of conversations about your concerns that both cyber and ultimately autonomous weapons not only take people out of the loop of the weapon system, but because they speed things up and because they make it easier for politicians to decide to go to war, because they can imagine this as something of a bloodless war of robots on robots, or in the cyber world, computer on computer, you actually add to global instability. So I wonder if you talked to us a little bit about that, and tell us a little bit about how prepared you think NATO is for this kind of world? Because I come from a country where the president kept saying NATO was obsolete.
Yeah. Of course, NATO is not obsolete, but NATO is not prepared for this kind of warfare. Let me be quite clear about it. In particular, NATO needs to speed up its decision-making processes. In the 90s, when NATO took action in the Balkans to protect the Balkan population against genocide, NATO spent six months to take that decision. When during my term as Secretary General, we took action in Libya to protect the Libyan population against attacks from its own government, we spent six days to take the decision. In the future, we may have six minutes, maybe less. So you will have to drastically change the way you take decisions in NATO to adapt to this new situation. The use of artificial intelligence and robots in warfare will drastically speed up combat. So I think this is a major challenge, and soon, this is not in a distant future. This is right around the corner. So soon, you may see swarms of robots attacking a country. And it will create more instability in the world.
When you say swarms of robots, you mean perhaps, say, swarms of automated drones, for example?
Yes, for instance, attacking a country. And it will create more instability, not only because the robots can easily be deployed because they are not frightened, they don't get tired, they don't get bored, so it's very easy to deploy them. But not only because of that, but also because it will create more strategic instability in the world. Since the Second World War, we have, of course, it may be a negative thing, but we have had no real great power conflict because of what we might call the terror balance, the possession of nuclear weapons, and what might be called the mutual assurance of destruction if you actually use the nuclear weapons. It has kept people at bay when it comes to a great power conflict. But that will also change with the use of artificial intelligence and a more active use of cyber weapons. Actually, you could, through a very sophisticated use of your cyber weapon, you could paralyze your enemy. So that you have to choose between losing control of the nuclear weapons or actually use the nuclear weapons. So also in that respect, you will increase instability, the strategic instability, which of course is reinforced by the fact that we have some, what I would call revisionist powers, Russia, of course, but also China. They try to make sure they have a voice in world affairs. They want to challenge the American leadership, and they can make use of what I would call gray zones, not an open military conflict with the United States, they would be deemed to lose that, but they can provoke below the level that will initiate an open conflict. And we have seen that blending of force, misinformation, infiltration, cyberwar, economic blackmail exercised by Russia in Ukraine, just as an example. So not only because it's easier to deploy robots, but also because it will create more strategic instability, we should do what we can to prevent the production and use of autonomous lethal weapons. Let me just add to this some ethical problems. I think the use of lethal force should always involve human beings. And this raises, of course, the question and issue of how human interaction with machines can take place. And in principle, you have three options. You could be in the loop, which means you are in charge, always using the machine, or you can be on the loop, which means you supervise the machine, and you can intervene if it does something you don't like. Or you can be out of the loop. That is, you tell the machine, attack that country, and then you will just leave the rest to the machine. And I think it's important that, to stress, that to comply with the laws of armed conflict. You should involve human beings, and you should at least be on the loop. And this is why I am in favor of trying to introduce legally binding treaties that will prevent production and the use of these kinds of autonomous lethal weapons. And to your question, I don't think it could be an argument that you will always have problems if a rogue adversary nevertheless produces and trying to use those weapons. You have exactly the same problem with, as we have prohibited the use of landmines, of blinding lasers, of cluster munitions, of chemical weapons, it's exactly the same problem. You will always be faced with the risk that rogue adversaries will use them anyway, but at least they will then be war criminals. And I think that's an argument in favor of trying to elaborate such legally binding treaties.
Andrew, let me just, you and I have had this conversation before in various classrooms and other places, let me just try to press you on that for a moment, because while I think almost everybody in the room would agree with the general principle that you want to have humans in the loop, you could imagine a moment, and Ludwig, I'd like you to jump in on this as well, where you have to set up a system in which the human can't make some of the immediate decisions because of either human access to a target or because of speed. So let me give you an example. President Bush and President Obama had to make the decision about whether or not to use a cyber weapon to go after Iran's nuclear centrifuges. You could argue it may have been a somewhat civilian target. These were centrifuges, all they do is they produce uranium. They're not actually weapons. They're producing the fuel that you might use in a nuclear weapon. To get the cyber attack going, they had to put an implant with the Israelis into the Iranian factory. That implant stayed there for months, watching how the system worked, and trained itself to help destroy those centrifuges when the moment came. There wasn't a human being who was controlling that timing, because the Iranians had separated the plant from the internet. So it wasn't like somebody back in Washington or somebody at Siemens, which made some of the controlling equipment here in Germany, could have sat there and sent signals in. The software had to do it by itself. The software had to do it by itself, because once it was inside the plant, it was like it was on an island. Do you consider that taking a human out of the loop?
It's a good example, and it illustrates all the dilemmas we are faced with. Now, I think that operation was legitimized, but I don't think you in advance are able to give clear answers. It will be a case-by-case decision. But still, I think it would move mankind many steps forward if we already now started to elaborate legally binding treaties, which would make all that illegal. You have similar dilemmas when we're speaking about all the other banning measures I have mentioned. I don't think such questions should block our possibility to prevent something more disastrous, namely that you see swarms of unmanned vehicles, as the military puts it.
Sure. But you could imagine the Chinese saying, well, you put an automatic program inside the Iranian systems, we can, that clears the way for us to put an automatic program into our swarms of tiny drones.
Yeah.
Ludwig, you mentioned at the end of your conversation that the German parliament would have to basically make a decision to do an operation, an offensive operation. But it's the nature of warfare, and particularly of cyber warfare, and also, if we ever got to this robotic part here, that it all depends on speed and secrecy. And with all due respect to the German parliament, and I would apply this to the US Congress as well, they would not be known for their speed, and they certainly wouldn't be known for their secrecy.
Yeah, of course, we discuss what our parliament is doing, but nevertheless, I think it's clear that every operation we are going in is controlled by parliament, is mandated by the parliament. But within this mandate, of course, we can have specific operations. So it's a question how the mandate is phrased and what is allowed under the mandate. When the mandate doesn't win, every single operation has to be.
Okay.
If certain activities are mandated, we can execute it.
Exactly. Okay. Mary, let me take the same question that we were debating with Anders and Ludwig to you. Would you consider what the United States and Israel did to the Iranian centrifuges to be a robotic-like attack because it was on autopilot?
I'm not the cyber expert on this panel.
Right.
And our campaign is focused on kinetic weapons.
But this had a kinetic effect, right? I mean, this made things blow up. Centrifuges blew apart. So, and there is this sort of odd gray area where cyber wanders into the real world and makes factories blow up, arms blow up. And whether you consider that robotics, I don't know, or I probably wouldn't, but...
Mm-hmm. I don't know if I can answer that question, because I'm not familiar with the incidents and I don't, I'm not as familiar with cyber. What we're talking about in our campaign is the physical weapon systems themselves. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. No, but that's interesting, because I want to just tease out what you mean by a physical weapon system. So if you have an autonomous tank driving down a road in Syria and picking targets, that clearly fits within your category.
Depends on how the tank is controlled. Is it being, I mean, we have a lot of autonomous vehicles at the moment, coming up as well. And we see the being used for patrolling and for other purposes. Some of them will become weaponized, and the question is, how is it being controlled?
So in other words, as long as a human being is selecting the target, even if that human being is 6,000 miles away, that's not autonomous, and therefore you believe the human is in the loop, as Anders just said. Pretty much, okay. So you can have a remote-controlled weapon, and an armed drone over Iraq or Afghanistan is essentially that. There is somebody sitting in Langley, Virginia, or in Nevada with a joystick, and they're looking at the targets, and they're making a human decision about whether or not to take out that target. That's not what you're discussing here.
No. And we want to retain that type of, I mean, there are a lot of problems with drone warfare, and we're not advocating for use of any other type of weapon just because we're advocating for human control over weapon systems. But yeah, I don't, yeah.
Okay. Now, supposing, and here we're pushing you just a bit, supposing over time it became clear that the automated system inside the drone was better at distinguishing whether there were civilians around or children playing in a playground nearby who could get hit by collateral damage than the human being watching through that sort of grainy, you've seen the pictures, right? You're still of the view that you want a human making that decision, even if you believe that the drone might be able to better call off a mission because it sees children in the neighborhood?
Our principal concern is with what we were describing before, is the human out-of-the-loop weapons, the human-on-the-loop weapons. We want to ensure that the control that they have is meaningful, that it's not just an automatic response, that there is some deliberation that goes into this. And this is where the governments are starting to hone in on the specific nature of that control, how would that function? And I can't answer that question, but that's why we want everybody to come together and try and answer it through a new piece of international law. This is not an easy topic. There are a lot of big questions that are yet to be answered, and the campaign doesn't have all of the answers. We've got a lot of smart people who are included in it, including roboticists and artificial intelligence experts, who said that it is possible to, yeah, to solve this problem.
Madam President, we'll come back to you just a second. Let me just press this issue with you for a moment. You know, in 1899, in Europe, there was an agreement reached, it lasted about five years, that people would not arm aircraft in any way or drop a bomb from the air. Because actually, it was before aircraft time, at the time they were sort of thinking about balloons, right? Then the Wright brothers came along, got their work done. By 1918, we had a full air war happening over Europe. As you think about the kind of agreements that you're trying to get the world toward for more peaceful use of AI, keep that going, how do you, how do you think about the enforcement issues that we all think about with the violation of or the abandonment of such limitations, like what happened in the 1899 agreement?
First of all, I would like to say that the examples you had been bringing before, they were all automated systems. None of them were actually autonomous systems. Autonomous system will simply be given a command to clean out some territory, and it will do it. That's different. If you think about which kind of regulation we need, then first of all, we need to agree that if something is becoming globally dangerous or dangerous in our understanding of international law, we will have the right to react. Similarly, as in Tally Manual 1 and 2, you deal with cyber wars and the situations below the war threshold. You can read these manuals, they're developed by NATO, Center of Excellence, on cyber issues. We need to agree that we will react. And then we come to the question, when we will react? I gave some examples. For example, if we agree that there is a threshold, that at some level, every algorithm must have a switch-off capacity, which we could all use in case we deem that this is a dangerous system, then we simply will come together, decide, and switch the system off.
A switch-off, a remote, software-enabled switch-off system?
If we, if we say that we will have the right to inspect and intervene, if we notice that in an unknown location, not related to any state, mind you, because I don't think that AI will be mainly only state developments at all, we have the right to send in international inspection and see what is going on. Then we can take measures if we are not getting access to such kind of a system. So it doesn't differ that much of what you...
Similar to the IAEA's inspection.
But the main problem, the main problem for us is to really not to go for any particular technology, but to go against the principles, after the principles, not to try to regulate what you have now, because you don't know what you will have. In a way, you need a foolproof system which will say, whichever way technology develops, whichever way AI manifests, it may be doing, it's very popular among the AI communities, I understand, it may be going wild all by itself, making our world into paper clips, very popular example, I'm sure many of you have heard of it. It might do it. Then we need to have a system which will allow us, never mind who owns the system which is going wild, never mind what the owner of that system thinks, we need to have a possibility to switch it off. And it doesn't matter what's the technology. And if you say that if you have a truly AI system, it would be intelligent enough not to make the world into paper clips, because there is no demand, no positive reward for making the world into paper clips, then look at us humans, what we are doing right now. We are mining, spending resources, server capacity, energy to mine what? Bitcoin. Is Bitcoin money related to any economy? It isn't. Does it therefore have any coin value, any real value? It doesn't. Yet somebody tells us that it is worth $10,000, and we spend huge resources mining it. So why would not AI get the similar external trigger wrong? So we need to be able to think for all these situations, and then we need to have everything ready to act flashing speed. And the time to deal with it is now, because it's 2018. And as I said, it's 50/50 that by the middle of this century, we will have a truly AI system. We cannot drag our feet, and I totally agree with others here, that we need to radically speed up how we deal with these issues. Because if you look at how we are trying to apply international law to cyber, yes, you have Tally manuals, you have other academic collections of thinking how it should apply, but we have absolutely no international law space, which will really make it sure that all our basic principles still apply in the cyber world. They would now need to apply also in AI world, exactly in the same way, in technology-neutral way.
It's interesting that you talk about the switch-off system, because of course, the technologists will tell you that will be the first thing the hackers all head for, because they will try to, obviously try to remotely switch things off. Anders, you had something you wanted to add, and we wanted to...
Yeah, it's a discussion about the law of war. Let me stress, it will apply to all actors, whether you used a manned drone or aircraft or an unmanned drone. It's exactly the same rules. So I think it's essential to ensure that you at least have a man with a joystick or something, who you can hold responsible for eventually breach of the law of war. I think that's essential. That's why I argue in favor of elaborating these legal treaties. I know all the problems. We already have problems. We have also a non-preliferation treaty on nuclear weapons. We all know the problems in complying with that, but still, it's better than nothing.
I would like to add another aspect. I think if you have technology, you will have always two sides of a coin. The benefit chances good use and the bad use. And I think in that aspect, if you're looking at the digitalization, we have to face also the fact that in addition to the state actors, we will be confronted with other actors like terrorism and organized crime can cause similar effects, where the project was previously for state actors. And this probably should help to unify the states to get binding conventions, because this may be a threat for all of them, independent where you are. I think this is probably a way, because this is a challenge that you have in highly-digitalized states. It may be relatively cheap, relatively simple to hurt states.
Well, Ludwig, you've raised a very good point, because in the nuclear world, of course, there were just a handful of states that had nuclear weapons, so you could put together a treaty fairly easily. Case of biological, chemical weapons and landmines, it was pretty much all states. But in cyber, and maybe in AI as we move toward this, criminal groups, proxies who are working on behalf of states, but you can't quite trace, what you said before about the Russians being a good example, use of proxies, teenagers, they all don't sign treaties, particularly the teenagers. So it's going to be a much more complex way to put this together.
Absolutely.
Did you have something you want to say?
Yes, I wanted to react to that immediately. Because this is exactly why I propose we create this whistleblowing, positive feedback loop. People should be able to mark blockchain, and if the marks go up, they are marking for betting that international mission is coming to check what is going on. And we see a cluster of these kind of marks. Then we go and see what is going on. And if you add some kind of positive reward, like you can cash in if your bet is right, like insider trading made legal and positive, then people would mark the dangerous developments. They may be teenagers, they may be actually criminals, they may be also honest software traders, but if they think something is dangerous, they will put a mark there, and you will go after that cluster. And if there is also a positive feedback for them, like getting some resources, who knows what resources might be at that point in time in history? We don't know. Then you would always know what is going on, but it has to be then therefore rewarded. If you don't have anything which will make people to bet, then you wouldn't get this kind of a model working. But this will be a whistleblowing model available to everybody, creating technology, using technology. And this would add immediately into the technology a safer develop by which we could go. This is one idea. There are certainly others stemming from the technology itself. And why I'm giving this example is exactly this. You cannot discuss how to regulate AI without taking into account that you can use the same instruments of creating it or itself to regulate it.
Okay, well, I've been having all the fun up here, getting the chance to ask the questions, so we want to spread that around all of you now. There are some microphones that are out in the crowd, or people coming by with microphones. So we will get a microphone to you. Please wait until the microphone arrives to you to ask your question. Please tell us very briefly who you are, and make sure that the question is actually a question, which is preferable usually to a speech. So who should we start with here? We know this is not a shy crowd. Gentleman right here in the middle, stand up there, there's a mic coming to you.
Hello, good evening. I am Sadat from Afghanistan, and I heard a lot here about human rights, and it would be really nice of you all to answer my question as a honest human being, not as a politician, because I never trust politicians. And does the human rights belong to a special nationality or overall to all humans? Because there are some countries who are dying peoples daily, and you're hearing nothing. And the question to Bundeswehr represented here, you talk about intelligence, that we are trying to work on that here. Is it just for the Germans who are living in Germany or the Germans who are around the world? I work for ISAF, five years, and those terrorists who killed German soldiers and those who got arrested from German soldiers, they said by themselves they got training in Pakistan. And how is your reaction with them? Those who are killing German soldiers? I'm not talking about the Afghan people, because their lives are really cheap and inexpensive, and their lives are nothing for international community, because the Afghan government is involved in this, and... community, because the Afghan government is involved in this, and Pakistan is involved in this attacks, and NATO, who are almost twenty-eight countries involved in this, and everyone knows, normally in such a situation, every child, not the politicians, every child knows who is responsible of terrorists. And I had also advised that whenever we know where it's a global danger for the world, if there is a place where they are trying to produce terrorists, we will fight against that. When we compare Germany with another country, Germany is trying to invest money to produce cars, Pakistan is investing monies to produce terrorists. How would be your reaction on that? Thank you.
Well, let's see, anybody wanna?
Did you get the question?
Pick that up right away?
I got the beginning, at least. I think if I talk about liberal democratic values, then human rights definitely are parts of them for me, so definitely, human rights issues need to be taken into account in every world, analog, digital, hybrid, cyber, AI, everywhere. And this is exactly what I'm advocating for, let's agree that these same analog world rules also apply in all the, all the rest of the worlds which we are seeing emerging, and it would make regulating them much, much easier. And frankly, you said you don't trust any politician, and I'm a politician by definition, but, but I would say that your distrust or anybody else's distrust in politicians or negative acts by politicians cannot be in any way taken care of by technological development or restricting the technological development, in no way. If you have a tendency to snoop on your people, if you want to rule the world, you will try every technology to do so, it doesn't matter in which kind of phase of global development you are, sixteenth century, twentieth century, twenty-third century, it will be exactly the same. But the rest I didn't get, sorry about it.
Very good. Right here? Well, yes, and then behind you as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Felix Roder, I was a law student in Berlin, majored in international law, worked for the UN for some time, and for the Foreign Service here in Germany, and my question, because it was really intriguing for me to the president of Estonia, how would the legal entity for artificial intelligent objects look like? Because I think that is crucial, sort of framing legal parameters in order to maintain accountability and reliability of weapon systems and future warfare.
Come back in a year, and I will know better, because this is the timeframe we are giving ourselves to figure exactly out how it will work. Right now, we know that we want to give systems some right of autonomous decision-making, when it has the necessary information, based on it, it will act. But then we need to deal with, with responsibility and liability issues, these are the most important issues for us, what we are right now looking at. We have simple examples already in our laws, for example, Estonian traffic code would regulate between an accident, between a car and a robot, and we've had one in October, and the car was found guilty, the car was, there was a driver, a human driver, the robot was crossing the street, but the driver made the mistake. So in a way, it will, it will have a kind of animistic characters, but the more important, of course, will always be the aspects of liability and accountability which we need to look at.
There was another hand right behind you, young lady there, yeah.
Thank you, Ulrike Franka from the European Council on Foreign Relations, a think tank. And I was wondering whether you see any role for the European Union in regulating all of this? I mean, we have someone from NATO here, and from nation-states, and from an NGO, but do you think that the EU should play a role and can play a role? And I'm specifically thinking of lethal autonomous weapons here.
Hi, Olga, nice to see you. Yeah, European Union is participating in the talks that are happening in Geneva at the convention on conventional weapons, it has a seat at the table, and it can make interventions and give its support for the process. Our problem that we face, though, is that many European countries have not formulated their policy on this, I'm looking at you, because Denmark has, has, has not formulated its policy yet, and has not, not been participating fully in the, in the diplomatic talks.
I'm not a prime minister anymore.
But it's.
He doesn't take responsibility for that anymore.
Exactly. I'm not too sure how, how the European Union can play a stronger role before the, the countries themselves have decided what they want to do on this, and that's not to say that European states are not taking action on this. Germany chaired these talks in 2015 and 2016, France was the country who got this started. Various countries are starting to take action on this, but the European Union as a whole has made some initial statements, but not yet the policy, and it would be good, though, if it could take stronger action on this.
Andrews is a version of that same question. Can you imagine a role for NATO, which by my accounting took five years to get consensus on the question that a cyber attack against a NATO country could constitute an Article Five attack to which you would respond? And that was on a, you know, what seemed to be a simpler issue than the one that's come up here.
Absolutely, but still NATO is quicker than the EU, and that's a problem. I think the EU could and should play a stronger role when it comes also to addressing this issue of the use of artificial intelligence, robots, et cetera. While NATO will remain, I think, for the foreseeable future, the cornerstone of European security, I appreciate if the EU could further strengthen its defense cooperation. Now, the EU has already decided what has been called PESCO, this is a structured, permanent and strengthened cooperation on defense, I appreciate that, and I think an integrated part of that should be the use of artificial intelligence and robots in warfare.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure if a role is the right word, but I think we need all the platforms that are available in the international umbrella, be it the World Economic Forum, NATO, EU, UN, also this conference, to discuss and bring these things in the mindset forward. I think that is a role that all these entities at least should have. And concerning NATO and the Russos, NATO's agenda is not an anonymous entity, it's a representation of twenty-nine nations. So which the nations, which are, the ones without deciding, does it go forward or not?
And very often dragging their feet.
I think EU and NATO both, both have a role, but I have a proposal to the other world leaders, vote Estonia into the United Nations Security Council for period 2021, and we'll bring all the digital and AI agenda there, as we have been doing during the EU Council presidency last year, when Estonia was invatral.
I would predict we will all be in our autonomous cars by the time the EU would get its act together, figuring this out. There was a question right here, sir. Is that microphone coming to you?
Good day, thanks a lot, Mr. Sanga, my name is Aaron Fuller, I'm in cybersecurity, and you pointed to the issue of Staxnet and Iranian centrifuges. And I think we should be far more concerned about our infrastructure, just think of what happened, I think it was two years ago in Ukraine, when electrical power stations were shut down, or last year, it was impending, also another sort of, our infrastructure, and just consider what will happen when we have a blackout for more than five days in Germany or in any other country. This would be far more destructive than any lethal weapon we have today. Thanks a lot.
Sure, Andrews.
Yeah, I would just add to this, because you're quite right. This is exactly the reason why NATO in 2014 decided that cybersecurity is now an integrated part of collective security. That is, a cyber, a cyber attack can be considered what we call an Article Five situation, and initiate a counterattack from NATO. We never speak about the, what kind of counterattack, that's part, that's an integrated part of our deterrence, but this is exactly the reason, also based on the experience from Estonia in 2007, that cybersecurity is now an integrated part of collective security, though the NATO treaty, strictly speaking, only mentions the hard security, but now we have broadened the definition, and I think that is a, a necessary adaptation to today's world.
I just wanted to say that eleven years after we first in Estonia came under cyber attack, we are now hoping that in a couple of years, using closed blockchain technology, we will be able to detect and correct all hacks within one second of them happening. It will not be enough for electrical systems, but probably you wouldn't go straight in in ten milliseconds and, and make something fail. All the current technologies normally infiltrate and then act, so one minute should be quite high level of protection.
I think, I think in that respect, I have to support our political masters, because in the cybersecurity strategy for Germany 2016, we have, I think, recognized these challenges that we have. And where's the key role, that we see in the further development of the call, the National Cyber Defense Center, where all the entities will have a role in cybersecurity in Germany, are coming together, and this must get in operational flavor, which is one of the tasks that we will have in the new legislation period, under the lead of Minister of Interior, also to have reaction capability for these kinds of situations, and we have to prepare for these things, we have to establish processes, we have to work together with the entities. And this is conceptually covered, I think, and it has to be now translated into reality.
I'd only add one thought to that, because you, you remind us rightly of the kind of attack on infrastructure that can be crippling, and you saw that certainly in Estonia in a much lesser way, in a greater way in Ukraine. If you asked Americans two years ago, what worried them the most in these things, that would have been it, and to some degree, it blinded people to the much more subtle uses that the Russians went to in the course of the election, where the elec-, both the voting machines and the use of social media were not really considered critical infrastructure. And you saw how that came about. Ma'am, right here, yes.
I thank the ladies of the panel, and especially the president of Estonia, for our very human aspect and approach of the problem. I think that the people who are here, the guests these days, are not looking for war, but are looking for peace. And I give just a little thing to mind, in mind, what you as expert absolutely know, that one hundred nuclear weapons will kill two-point-billion people. So there are actually about fourteen thousand nuclear weapons around the planet, and two-thousand to three-thousand are ready to be actively employed. It can take thirty-five to forty minutes to have an impact. I hope that this conference will give thinking on to abolish nuclear weapons. Thank you.
I understand that nuclear weapons will be discussed on Saturday afternoon.
I think that's right.
And my colleague from the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons will be speaking at that, that's the Civil Society Coalition behind the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons adopted in July of last year.
Okay, I saw a hand in the back right there, sir? Yep. That's right, why don't you start, and then the gentleman in front of you? Yep.
Hello, my name is Maxime Oshoniman, I'm working for IABG, a German think tank. My question goes to you, Kirsty, you said we had to speed up the process on AI weapons, but algorithms are owned and created by companies and the industry, so how do you make sure that you have access to these algorithms, and you can take a look at them, what they are doing? Because we know it, for example, from machine learning, facial recognition, the only person who has not a problem with it is a white man.
Yes, indeed, it is quite clear that we don't know where artificial intelligence will be created, and that's why we need to first agree that we will monitor, and if we find something suspicious, we go and look. And for monitoring, the simplest way is energy consumption, because frankly speaking, if somebody tomorrow has clearly developed an AI system, then the only way for us to know it, unless it is using some kind of hardware which we already recognize as potentially useful for artificial intelligence, is energy consumption. But then, we need a system by which we have agreed that we will have the legal power to intervene and go and see what is indeed going on. It doesn't matter in that case, I mean, who has created it, we know this whole, somebody's using a lot of energy, we go and check, because we find it has a potential to be destructive for the humankind.
I just wanted to say that lethal autonomous weapons systems is not the only artificial intelligence issue that concerns human rights watch, we are looking into the use of artificial, it raises many concerns about justice, fairness, accountability, and this, this notion of bias which was just mentioned, we worry about that in criminal justice, risk assessments, decision-making on sentencing and bail and parole, how you determine people's credit, and, and, and you can, you know, you can, you can see bias in, in how governments could target certain individuals. So it's not all rosy when it comes to AI at all, and, but it's not a competition either, we can address all of the issues that are being raised here, it's not a case of one being more important than the other.
There was another hand right there, yeah.
I kinda get a feeling that the private sector will outpace public sector in AI innovation.
Does the, could you repeat that?
The private sector will outpace the innovation in terms of AI, you know, public government agencies. So could you actually foresee a sort of a danger from rogue elements or non-state actors, you know, to, to various sovereign countries with, you know, with AI? I know this point has been touched upon, and how are we gonna stop this madness?
I think you raise a question, raises a really excellent point, because if you just look at the investment levels in AI, it's much higher in, in autonomous systems in particular. In autonomous systems, it's much higher in the private sector, because we've seen this very big investment surge in the automotive field to begin to develop autonomous cars and, and so forth. And it seems likely that this is one of those technologies that will start off in the civilian world and then move to the military, as opposed to the kinds that we saw back in the Cold War, particularly in the nuclear era, where it began all with huge government investment, and then some of that spun off into, say, commercial military missile uses and so forth. How does that affect the dynamic?
But it's nothing new. Internet of Things is not public creation neither. And indeed, internet was, of course, well, military invention, but most of its developments, which we nowadays deal with and try to regulate as well, is privately created. But it's not public monopoly in no way, so this is not new in this sense at all.
But the, while it's not new, the question, if I understood it right, and tell me if I don't have that, is that since these will be out first as commercial products, you could imagine a terror group or whatever adopting a commercial product for an autonomous military use? The easiest one being, take an autonomous car, pack it with explosives, and turn it into a, the equivalent of a suicide bomber without the suicide bomber?
Of course, that's a risk, you have to prepare for that, but let me stress, I'm strongly in favor of using artificial intelligence, and I think we should encourage the private sector to actually further develop and use artificial intelligence, I'm not against it. What I am against, of course, is the use of the artificial intelligence for. What I am against, of course, is the use of the artificial intelligence for destructive purposes within a war game. So I think we should focus on that instead of raising fears about the private sector use of this new and very promising technology. I could mention the first 101 positive examples of what artificial intelligence can do of good things for mankind.
And those autonomous cars themselves, if you believe it, will probably reduce the number of deaths in car accidents, even if it does raise to some degree the number of suicide bombers, maybe, yeah.
There may be another aspect that is probably inherited in the question, when you compare the private sector with the public sector. Looking at these new technologies with these high innovation cycles, the processes that we have to follow in the public sector are much more time consuming than ones that you can use in the private sector. And I think this is a thing that has to be addressed at the political level as well because otherwise we will not probably be able to keep up the speed of developments in the private sector and the public sector. And this may be challenging in some areas as well. And I think we have to think in this aspect as well.
I think the fact that you wouldn't need a driver to drive a car full of explosives into a mass of people actually doesn't change the game that much. If you think it in this way, that it's anyway illegal to kill people. And if you now have a regulated space which says, which can attribute the responsibility for an AI system or for a simple automated system, and this is what you need to deal with, and this is what we in Estonia do, we make sure that there is an attribution case if somebody uses something, even if they were not present there, they will be guilty. We will know how that works. Then you have nothing new in this situation. Unfortunately, we have plenty of suicide bombers as well, so I don't know whether the risk will rise at all.
Ma'am, right there.
Yes, hello, Michaela Kufner, Deutsche Welle. I have a question to really all of you because isn't the challenge of artificial intelligence that you're just mapping out, that it no longer can be separated into what is actually military and what is civilian? So not just our target civilian, but actually artificial intelligence itself could potentially come as a threat also from the private sector. So we have a former representative of NATO sitting here, we have a representative from the German military, which doesn't just need a mandate from German parliament, but which also cannot act within Germany's borders legally. So how do you overcome that kind of challenge? And where really is the forward-looking plan to make civilian infrastructure more resilient to a potential threat rather than think of it solely in military terms?
Who wants to take that first?
I don't know.
Maybe I can start. Of course, the Bundeswehr is not responsible for internal security. That is a task of the Minister of Interior. Whereas one article in our basic law, the article 35, we can, based on request, of course, support other responsible entities. That is the legal possibility that we have if we are not able or if we are not have enough resources in certain circumstances. That's the possibility that we have at the moment.
I would, if I may, I would very much like to emphasize that if we talk about the systems we use today, and then we are talking about cyber risks, not AI risks, then for everybody, the most important issue is cyber hygiene. No machine will ever be able to protect us humans. It's always us humans who will be protecting ourselves. And the first tool in cyber world of protection is identification. People need to have secure and safe identification needs and options in the cyber world. Some countries in the world give this option to their people. Other people and businesses who deal and transact and act and talk over internet have to rely on privately created, without any state guarantee, passporting systems. I think this is a flaw we need to correct.
Of course, one of the problems is that the source of a cyber attack, for instance, can be very ambiguous. And that's exactly what, for instance, the Russians, maybe also the Chinese and other revolutionist powers have used so effectively in what we call hybrid warfare, that we don't know whether an attack is initiated by a state actor or someone pretending to be an NDO operating from a cellar in St. Petersburg or whatever it might be. So that's, of course, a major problem. The question is, how can we address it? I think one of the measures should be to increase our intelligence, our ability to actually look into from where originates such an attack. And furthermore, you also asked us, how can we make our own systems more resilient? That's also a very good question. I think we have done a lot already. We have learned a lot of lessons, but it's an ongoing process. It's always work in progress. So in that respect, I think we should learn from everything we see to make our systems more resistant when it comes to attacks. For instance, our energy systems should be protected. In that respect, you could also use more conventional measures. For instance, the European Union could further develop its energy union so you get free flow of energy across borders so that it's not possible for a potential adversary to blackmail one specific country because you can always let energy flow freely across borders. So it's a mix of conventional measures and more sophisticated cyber measures.
I think that Andrew raised a really interesting and important point here about attribution, though, because all the things that we have learned about the difficulties of attribution in cyber will apply to autonomous weapons. And, you know, I'm reminded that when the New York Times got a major cyber attack for a series of stories one of my colleagues did about how the leadership in the families of some of the leadership in China enriched themselves a number of years ago. It looked like the attack was coming from a university in the southern United States. And these can make so many stops along the way that it takes a long time to untangle them. The Equifax hack, you all read so much about, still has not been formally attributed months later. Let's see, there were a few more hands out here. Young lady right there? Yep. The mic coming to you. Oh, okay. When you're done, back there. Okay, fine. Please.
Hi, my name is Perikev Ostor. I'm the chairman of the International Moramilia Institute and a co-founder of the Power Party in Iceland. I have a question to anyone who likes to answer it. First of all, has any of you read a brilliant book called Weapons of Math Destruction? If not, I strongly urge you to do that because it deals with algorithms and how it sort of impacts our day-to-day lives in a really often unfortunate way. And I want to ask you, if you feel that we have managed to catch up with protecting basic human rights in cyber, and we tried to do that before, we want to figure out ways to protect ourselves for the algorithms or towards them. And also, please bear in mind that we have no idea who is feeding the algorithms because it's absolutely in total secrecy about that and no accountability whatsoever.
Anybody want to pick up on the algorithm issue?
Well, if I think about again, Talin manuals, one and two, then I would say that we have quite good understanding that everything which applies in analog world and is forbidden in analog world, similarly true in cyber world. So there seems to be a common understanding, but there is no kind of global agreement that this is indeed so. And I, of course, miss it as well. And my big worry is that all of our agreement and lawmaking is much slower nowadays than is the technological development. But even if we accept that analog rules apply, attribution problems, as mentioned, are huge. But attribution problems as well, nothing new. Even in quite conventional warfare, we sometimes have difficulties in understanding who did what to whom exactly. So again, in cyber, in conventional, in AI, you will have to fight these problems. But we need to have a model where actually the danger is taken out, the risks are limited, and then we will deal with who did what to whom exactly.
Okay, right back there.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is August Schutz, and I currently study neuroengineering at TUM. And my question is related to that because at the moment, DARPA seems to be the biggest employer for neuroengineers, which I don't find too promising. But since you specifically mentioned that keeping the human in the loop is really crucial in future warfare, I'm just wondering, and this particularly for you two, how the Bundeswehr is thinking about neuroengineering for this usage and the NATO as well? And there may be also an ethical point of view on that.
Andrew, you want to take the first shot then?
Yeah. Ben, what was the question exactly?
If the question was that you would like, that we recognize, that we will always have a man or a human in the loop, and I can say yes, we have no intention in the Bundeswehr to procure autonomous systems.
It was more specifically to, like, again, a buzzword as AI is as well, like the cyborg and the super military person. And then neuroengineering plays a big role. So DARPA has some things where they want to alter the human perception in a way. So it sounds really futuristic, and I was just wondering if the Bundeswehr and NATO are considering things like that as well, like exoskeletons and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. For NATO, the answer is very easy because NATO as such does not possess military capabilities, except the AWACS airplanes. They are, of course, manned by crews, out of which many are German. So NATO as such is very much dependent on capabilities provided by individual member states, the 29 allies. They are the ones who provide the capabilities. Personally, I have made my point very clear. I think we should do what we can to prevent production and use of what has been called killer robots, but the unmanned lethal weapons. We should always ensure that human beings are in charge, one way or the other, when we are speaking about such kinds of weapons.
Yeah, I agree with that. And what you were talking about neuroengineering, we hear about military human enhancements, I guess. I think that's what you were meaning. It's not being discussed, and this is why it was a good question. There was an opportunity for states to pick this up last December and start looking more at science and technology more generally and all of the different applications that are coming up. And this one is not being discussed, let alone, there's writing on it, there's academics studying it, but in a way, it's a little bit where autonomous weapons was another decade earlier. So, yeah, it's a concern.
You know, we've seen a little bit of this in the cyber arena that again might apply to autonomous because unless you are confident in your resilience, as Andrew suggested before, you don't have the decision space about responding to a cyber attack longer than a few milliseconds. So the system's got to be automated if you're going to have a significant defense, or you're just going to absorb the attack and hope to sort it out later on. And that depends entirely on how critical the target is. We are down to our last seven or eight minutes because I was strongly warned about how unruly this crowd grows if made late for dinner. So we're going to take just a few more. And I saw a few hands up in the back. Yes, sir, right there.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark, and I'm a PhD student. This is a very enlightening forum, and I'm very pleased with it. When it comes to artificial intelligence, there is an asymmetry of capability to develop and also to deploy. But when we speak of security and the decision to use literally autonomous weapons, there is a more global effect. My question has to do with the efforts that this forum makes to engage with countries that have no competitive means to develop their intelligence and so might not be in the decision-making framework of responsible usage, but certainly are pounding grounds when this is being done. Do we envisage collective responsibility, decision-making, including countries that may not have the means but clearly have the burdens? So I'm talking about efforts of engaging the Global South, countries in Africa, wherever else, about the implications of a potential advanced system and how in the effect that there has to be collective security in these countries, what views they may want to have about how responsible we use it. Because I think there's an extent to which those voices are missing. Thank you.
I mean, this is where multilateralism matters because it's not just the great powers, you know, the permanent members of the Security Council who are participating in the talks at the Convention on Conventional Weapons, on lethal autonomous weapons. It's all countries. It's open to all states to participate. And the ones who are perhaps most concerned are the countries from the Global South. The list of band states does not include any European countries at the moment other than the Holy See. It's countries from Latin America, from Africa, from the Middle East, from Asia, who are watching this with alarm, and they want to have a say in the future of the planet here. So that's why these international talks and this whole process matters so much to us because it is a collective problem and something that collectively needs to be done about it.
I think if we talk cyber and AI, then all our multilateral thinking needs to be much more inclusive than when we are talking, let's say, nuclear. And the reason is that every country may find itself in the situation that something on its territory is threatening something outside of its territory. You may have nothing to do with it, you may not be able to detect it, somebody else is detecting it, but it is an existential threat maybe to your country. So it's inclusive. Everybody needs to be in.
Okay, we have time for just one or two more. Right there.
Thank you. My name is Monica Ermit. I'm a journalist. I have a question to Mr. Leinhose. Does the German armed force or military support a ban like the one that is discussed at the CCW? Or on the other hand, do you prepare to defend against this kind of new weapons? Are you researching it? Are you preparing for it? Do you listen to, look to other countries, how they prepare to defend against it?
Thank you very much. First, I think we have a very clear position. We are not aiming for procuring lethal autonomous systems. That is very clear. Of course, we may be faced with a situation where some other countries may have this type of system, so we have to look, how can we defend against this type of systems? And I think this is a question that is not easy to answer. Where's first of all, an ethical and a political and a legal discussion, which should result, that these kinds of weapons should not be in the reservoir of any country. But if it's when the case, I think when we can only provide military advice, what is possible, what is not possible without having these kinds of things. possible, what is not possible without having these kind of things.
In a case like this, effective defense would probably have to take you beyond German borders because you're going into foreign networks that might be developing or controlling these kinds of things. How does the German concern about taking any kind of action beyond its borders, though obviously you've done a lot of good humanitarian work, military beyond its borders, play into this whole debate? Could you go into a foreign network as a matter of defense to keep an autonomous weapon from hitting here?
No, we, as a military, can only do something if it's mandated by our parliament. So it must be a military operation, and then, of course, we, if it's not mandated, can do something. Otherwise, it's not our business.
Okay, I just saw one or two more hands before. Back there, yeah.
It's a question to everybody. I'd like to hear your definition of war in light of what you just said. Where is the, where do you draw the line? Is the meddling of elections, is that an act of war? Was it war? Is Stuxnet an act of war? Is it war? So I feel like there's something going on here that we need to discuss. Thank you.
Who wants to take that on?
I'm not happy to start in that case because I think it's a very good question. And I think the political thinking you see in a decision where NATO nations have taken, what was the summit, where also cyber attack can cause an Article V situation. So what means, this situation of a war, or whatever you call it, finally, is not depending on a kinetic attack anymore. But it is a case by case decision by the nations. If you translate, it's a national entity, I think it's a similar consideration.
In Tallinn, we organize in the NATO CCD COA Lock Shield exercise, and many countries come to exercise there. And this has a technical part. Somebody is attacking, many people are defending, journalists are writing about it, then politicians are making decisions. But the very important part there is legal team. Everybody has a legal team which is discussing exactly this. What is the right within my countries, understanding of our own law and international law, to act in this kind of situation? And this develops our understanding of what, if there will be a need, might be indeed facilitating an Article V reaction. But there will never, again, I'm afraid, be a clear and concrete definition.
Seen from a NATO perspective, it's very clear, namely ambiguity. We never define when a red line is crossed. We never define how to respond if a certain member state is attacked. That's actually part of our deterrence. No one should know when they cross the line and how we would react because it's very easy. Abstain from attacking any NATO ally, then you can be safe. But if you do it, then we will respond decisively. It may be a conventional counterattack, it may be a cyber counterattack, you never know. Well, I think the overall conclusion, whether we are speaking about conventional threats or this new cyber threat or whatever you might call it, is that we need a determined leadership from the democratic world. Whenever the democratic countries retrench and retreat, they will leave behind a vacuum. And that vacuum will be filled by the bad guys. And that's actually what we are witnessing right now. So apart from all the technical issues we have discussed this afternoon, I would urge the democratic countries in the world to assemble in an alliance of democracies that can actually stand up against the advancing autocracies.
Mary, any last words from you?
I don't think.
Very good last word.
Well, to your question, there is still considerable debate in the United States and some in Israel about whether Stuxnet was an act of war or just a fairly standard covert action. But remember, when it happens to you, you're much more likely to call it an act of war than when you do it to someone else. And that's been true throughout history. I want to thank all of our panelists for a great conversation. I want to thank Sophia for hanging in there through the entire conversation. And I want to tell you that there will be a reception, you'll be glad to hear, afterwards, back in the atrium, in which we will have drinks that are fully human origin, poured by human beings. There will be no autonomy in the drinking. And I look forward to a great rest of the conference. I want to thank you all for coming out this afternoon.
Thank you, David.